Good afternoon, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Today is October 19th. Tonight is a planning zoning mission general meeting and public hearing with some continuations. We're going to start right away. The first item on the Jennifer general meeting is the election of officers. Every year in November we roll officers, sometimes three, eleven, sometimes they don't because you wouldn't vote on them. It's just three managers. Any special procedures chairman that you want to start with?
No.
No, there's chairman by chairman secretary.
Okay. Okay, I would open it up for nominations for the chairman. Anyone want to nominate?
I would like to nominate Mr. O'Vanny as chairman.
She thank you.
Give me a second.
Okay, any more nominations? Nomination not closed. All those in favor and Mr. O'Vanny, chairman, please say aye. That's five to zero in one extension. Next we have the vice chairman position. Anyone who would like to nominate someone for a vice chairman? George?
Nominate Ms. Leahy.
Ms. Leahy?
Good.
I will second that nomination. Anyone else nominate? Nomination not closed. All those in favor, Ms. Leckness Leahy as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Next we have secretary. Nominations are open. I would like to nominate Mr. Jim Rand as secretary. Looking for a second?
I'd second Mr. Rand.
Any other nominations? Nominations are not closed. All those in favor, Mr. Rand as secretary?
Can I vote for myself?
Yes you can. That concludes our round of office of officers. Welcome and congratulations to everyone, including myself, I guess. That's the end of the general meeting, so let's go right into the public hearing. Public hearing is a continuation of a prior public hearing regarding the amendment to the special permit application, number 79D, Darien Nature Center, town of Darien. One twenty Brookside Road proposes to amend the special permit application, 79D, to permit an increase in the use of the nature center and a number of participant visitors for various program uses and activities as well as for periodic special events with restrictions on use. This subject property is inclusive of the Cherry Lawn Park. It is located on the east side of Brookside Road opposite from its intersection with Everbrook Main. It is shown on a system map number 11 as lot 31 in the R1 zone. Okay, this is a continuation from the public hearing. We requested a few items from the applicant, which is one was had to do with the number of campers, for lack of a better word, in the past few years. The executive director of the nature center submitted that. And if what you have in your packet, I think it's a five year history or six year history, going back to all the weeks. Then we also asked them to submit their list of past activities and future planned activities, which is another spreadsheet that the nature center provided. That spreadsheet is good. I think it might be missing some items that they spoke of, it's in everybody's packet. Jennifer, there were a couple items that you requested. Do you know, we could probably answer those in public, but there was anything in writing that you'd want them to take dates and stuff like that?
When they had it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, chairman, am I missing anything?
No, you're correct, that the only two things in your packet are the middles by Lila Wetmore of the nature center, which are those two spreadsheets. I want to note for the record that the prior hearing was October 30th. Mr. Warble wasn't here. He's since become a member of the commission and he watched it on Vimeo and familiarized himself with the record. So he's up to speed on this.
Okay. So let's open up to, is it Lila?
Lila.
Lila, sure, thank you. Thank you for submitting the request information. You want to just go over the two documents that you submitted?
Sure, the first document goes back to 2014 and it represents the number of campers each week in our camp. And I can speak to those numbers specifically or they can speak themselves.
Two questions relative to that. What year did you take over as executive director?
I came, yep, in 2016.
Okay.
In 2015 and 2014, that was Elizabeth Furl.
And she, and prior to 2014, just because I knew her name, was Lynn Hamlin?
Right, Lynn Hamlin was there from 1993 to 2013.
Okay.
And Elizabeth took over in 2013.
Okay, I think these are pretty self-explanatory. The numbers seem pretty stable to me. Not much problem. I thought in a prior hearing, you said that before, when you got on board, the camp numbers were quote unquote low? I think that's what you said. Doesn't look like it was low in 15 and 14, but that's okay. Does anybody have any questions on this document? It is self-explanatory. Okay. The next document is the nature center events for 18, 19, and 2020, which is proposed. We're gonna say 2020 which is proposed, that's, you guys go by calendar, right?
We do.
Okay, perfect.
We do.
Just a little bit of background. You are kind of, kind of sort of a club? You have like a membership list or something like that, there's people that come and go?
We're more of a school than a club.
Okay.
Because we run school programs and members register for our programs using their membership. So as a member, you can register for our programs.
Okay.
So we're not really at all like a club.
Okay, the derivation of something like this, this is done for the YMCA, the Boy Scouts, most of the private clubs, Tokenie Club and Neilsex Club.
And Brookside.
The Mather Center, which is the newest, biggest one.
Mather Homestead, yes.
Mather Homestead.
These would all be principal uses requiring a special permit in residential zone.
Great.
Clubs, churches, social, cultural, and recreational uses serving community need or convenience.
The DCA is also on that list.
DCA's would be considered social, cultural, and recreational use.
Great.
Serving community need or convenience.
So the derivation of this is to get you guys in line with those other nonprofits, so to speak, maybe something like that? The, and some of them have, like the, for art, for reference, the YMCA has every single swimming down there. So their list is a lot longer because it's high traffic. But some of the clubs, we only make them register, you know, things that are over 150 people or 300 cars or something like that. The only thing I've noticed about this is, what about the quote unquote outside parties like the one for the Darien Power Squadron?
So I was asked to provide our annual events.
Okay.
And these are our annual events. If our space is rented by an organization, it isn't planned or scheduled in advance. We just, from our past, know that we've done as many as eight before. We're saying we don't want to do any more than five.
Okay.
They are not pre-scheduled.
What I would like to see, and this is being personally commissioned, is any other events that could be on here? And you could submit that to staff after, it doesn't have to do it now.
Any other planned events or historically?
Planned and future things that you want. Like you can't like, like at Tokenie, at Naroten Yacht Club, I think we have, they have slots for like five weddings or four weddings. That you can't have a wedding like 4th July weekend. But they have on their calendar, like weddings that may or may not happen, but there's a slot for it.
We don't do that. We don't reserve slots for events like that. If someone wants to rent it, they will ask us for a date. We currently have no rental reservations for 2020 scheduled.
Okay. Does anybody want to comment on that concept?
I could, the purpose would be to, for us to know, and if we want to regulate, maybe that's too strong a word, but the additional traffic, the additional usage over above what they have.
Agreed.
Would it not be, if we feel that's necessary, I don't agree one way or the other, since we have examples here of all these other, I mean, the down on the farm of the 15, 18, 1500. I mean, do we want to say no more than five, what they want, and no more than 1500 or no more than 800 or?
That's where I'm kind of.
I mean, I don't know what would work for the nature center, but maybe that's a way of addressing the concern.
You mean instead of annually getting it?
Sorry?
You mean instead of annually getting the list?
Well, we get it annually from the other.
Yeah, I think we still should.
Yeah, I think we should still get it annually. Like for argument's sake, the DCA submits one, right? And the DCA has nothing we need to plan. But if there's an event that they want to put on there that's bigger, they come back. But they have quote unquote like place card holders for events.
Well, in our, in our permit request, we had said that we would like to be able to have five.
Right.
But we don't have any dates or organizations or purposes for those events yet. So they are place held in the permit, but not in our calendar.
Okay. If you could do somewhere like that on a piece of paper, like you're not gonna have all five in the same month of August.
It wouldn't make sense, but I.
It wouldn't make sense.
I don't know.
Right.
I mean, again, it's never happened before.
Because if you limit yourself to five for argument's sake, and you had all five in August, then someone knocks on your door in December says, hey, can I have a party, like, ah, I'm out of slots.
Right.
Do you follow me?
I do. And that would, that is our decision as an organization.
Great.
We don't want to be distracted by rentals. So if we were to pack them all into August, I suppose that would just mean we're done.
This is Rachel Sargami, I'm president of the board.
Rachel, could you spell your last name for me?
Z A R.
I'm sorry.
Z A R G H A M I.
Thank you.
In the original permit, we're allowed to have a seemingly unlimited number of events, where it says there are also some special events conducted by the nature center each year. These events have attracted 250 to 300 people. These special events must be coordinated with parks and recs commission to avoid conflicts with other activities in the park and to ensure proper safety requirements will be satisfied. So we wanted to outline in our current permit application that we have certain sponsored events, which have quotas, and then we wanted to add a second addendum. But right now we're unlimited in the amount of events we can have with that capacity. So that's why we didn't specifically go into the expectations for 2020.
Okay, we're asking you two now.
Yeah, because we've, we've requested to kind of separate the two and.
So how can we be more specific than to add to say five events during the year? What would be more, what would be more?
I think they should just submit it to staff.
Well, I think what Mr. O'Vanny envisions is, every year annually, in the month of January, you would submit to staff, our office, a list of the large special events. And then if you have a sense of when the other smaller events would be, or whatever it is, a calendar for the year. Because my understanding is, you mentioned to me that you're doing that anyways now, is working on next year because you have to work with park and rec.
Right, so that's, that's this. Right, we've submitted our events.
Right.
And if we learn of a rental, we would be happy to share that.
So I think it would start, and usually what happens, what Mr. O'Vanny's saying is, the DCA, the YMCA, they don't always know on January 2nd.
Exactly.
What they're doing the whole year.
Right.
And we don't expect them to, but usually the YMCA says, yeah, probably sometime, we'll have some kind of swimming. We're not sure the exact dates, it could be this weekend or that weekend. And sometime in the fall, we're gonna have a pumpkin festival, we're not sure exactly what weekend. And, right, that's what you're talking about generally?
And DCA doesn't say like Mather Center, they don't know what Mather.
Mather Homestead. So every, and that's likely to be something, and we don't need to worry about it now, but that seems to be the sense the commission is. Every January submitting something for the record. And in this case, you have the unusual circumstances that you're gonna notify, it helps you notify park and rec in advance. So if maybe they can block out, so there's no soccer or baseball on the day that you have down on the farm.
If January 1st, if January 1st doesn't work, because you don't have your organization meeting until January 15th.
We actually, we do. We know our, we know our scheduled events for 2020, so, and we've provided those. And we, for the events that could be rental or sponsored by another organizations, if we learn of one, somebody wants to rent it in March, we will tell Jeremy, and we always would tell Parks Department.
That's perfect.
It's typically, it's like preschool groups that call a month in advance saying, can we use your space? So it's hard to, it's hard to know. We have some years where a lot of preschool groups call us and some years where none. So we usually get a call pretty close to the event date.
So we know two weeks before, so notice us.
I think we would be able, as soon as we book the event, we would be able to share that information with anybody who would like to know, but certainly Jeremy.
A preschool event, is that one classroom?
Like parents groups.
Is that 20 kids or is that 100 kids?
Is it night, just with, when the park is otherwise closed, where they want to use our space for an event?
How many kids?
No kids.
How many parents?
50 to 75.
Because what I'm thinking, we, we don't need to know about when 30 people are gonna show up.
Right. The Darien Power Squadron meeting was about 45 people using it for their annual meeting. And we didn't have a huge amount of notice.
Yeah, I guess the other question for the commission is, would you need to know, say, after hours? Like, November 19th, 8 o'clock at night, when there's nothing else going on in the park? And I think that's something the commission will have to hash out during deliberations is, upper level, and then, we don't need to tell, you know, have them notify you every time there's 10 or 12 or 15 people, but, or, and then the question is, even if it's off hours.
As another example, there was a death of a staff member's spouse. So a week before, they said, could we use your facility when it's closed, you know, for 50 people gathering? Do you want notice of that?
No, Neilsex could have been the same thing. That's fine. I don't think we need something like that, but.
Do you want to consider subcontracting this regulatory thing to park and rec? Because they gotta, they gotta get permission from park and rec.
True, I mean, it's a landlord tenet issue, it's a park and rec thing to do.
If we need to reuse the parking, we would ask for a permit for that parking. So if there are gonna be more than 50 or 60 people, that probably exceeds our parking lot with people coming each week for three. So we would be asking for a permit for that anyway.
Okay. I think, I think, I think you understand what we're looking for, and I think you know what, what you have. If it's 20 on your calendar, just submit us the calendar. Do you have your 2020 calendar?
For larger events exceeding 100 people.
That is what this is. So you've already got that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so right now we have no event from, sponsored by us or outside that'll exceed 100 people.
Sponsored and outside?
Correct. Right now we have nothing on the calendar for 2020.
Okay, and then what about the floor?
The fewest number of people. I guess the commission can kick that around to deliberations, whether that's 75 people or something like that.
Okay, that's how we can talk about deliberations.
Okay.
I think we're done with that. Do you have guys anything else to present?
No.
Commission, any more questions on this side? Any questions on this side?
Did you work out the timing with Parks and Recs?
Yep, so we shared that and we've gotten a quote for everything that we've asked for.
Awesome.
Okay, and the other thing, would you say, our approval is, can we, I guess, quote unquote the maximum? You know, Parks and Rec, which is your landlord, has a different view on it? We have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Would anybody in public like to speak to this application?
I mean, the only thing I'll add is that we've been floating a timetable for the amount of a temporary permit. And we would ask as, you know, like, for everybody to be as realistic as possible to what types of plans are in the master plan for Cherry Lawn Park and when that would actually be accomplished, for us to be able to kind of do normal business until that time. So if really there's gonna be, you know, a quote unquote pool installed in Cherry Lawn Park within 12 months, that's one thing. But if it's really gonna take a number of years to get that accomplished, we would ask for you to have a little mercy on us as an organization and notifying our neighbors and coming back to you with a full panel of information to grant us a permit for as long as we can operate under levels that we've been operating for the past number of years. Just because it's cumbersome. It's hard on a volunteer-staffed organization and, you know, we have a very limited budget. We don't have the budget for a parking study, you know, it's, we, you know, every dollar matters for us. And so it's difficult to.
Three foot, we were, it was empty for 10 years probably. And this town moves like a snail. They've been talking about a pool for 20 years.
Right. So like, you know, two years. I'm not sure if two years is like a real reality to major changes taking place that would really affect how we do business. And we're serving such a big market in the town and a big need. And we have parents like crying that they can't get spots. And, you know, we really are doing good work there, so we'd ask you to keep that in mind when you do deliberations.
You shall.
Thanks.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Well, if you want to take the public?
I asked for the public, nobody jumped up.
Oh, great.
Right?
Move to close?
Move to close, in a second. Those in favor? Thank you. Next item, well forbid.
Thank you.
For those. Proposed amendments to the zoning regulations, COZR number 5-2019, put forth by Felix F. Colari, Inc., doing business as BMW of Darien. Proposal to amend section 756 of the Darien zoning regulations to permit increase in building coverage from 20% to 25%, the billing height from 25 feet to 30 feet for properties that need service material in the service business SP zone. Elderly buildings must serve, must be served by a public water and sewer, the minimum of three acres in size, and located within 1,000 feet of central business district. Victims would be subject to a special part review by the commission. The full text of the proposed zoning regulation amendment is on file and available in the town clerk's office and the planning zoning office for inspection, online at www.darienct.gov, by Phoenix PMZ. You have a familiar face up here. Jeremy and I met with some people from Colari and BMW, two, three, four months ago, something like that.
Correct.
Did well for something like this. I bet you nickel, if we looked at this, when we'd be doing the zoning changes, we probably would have picked it up. But nobody spoke about it at that time.
Right. This is a little different than the typical application which you just saw for a special permit. This is a proposal to amend the zoning regulations. As part of your findings, you'll need to find that it's consistent, if you were to approve it, to find that it's consistent with the town plan of conservation and development, which is the 2016 town plan. Just as a quick side note, for zoning regulation, we referred it out to the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. They sent a memo dated October 18, 2019. The opinion of West Cog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact, therefore is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities, and the regional staff is making no comment.
Okay, we have in our pleasure, Mr. Wilder Gleason. Can you introduce yourself to the commission?
Wilder Gleason, Gleason and Associates, representing three entities. Felix F. Colari, Inc., which operates the BMW of Darien business. 140 Ledge Road Associates LLC, which owns 140 Ledge Road. Then 136 Ledge Road Associates, which owns the back. So the front is here, this is where the site is. It's three plus acres when you combine the front lot with the back lot. We also lease about a third of an acre here from the town of Darien for parking purposes. So the property is adjacent to Whole Foods Market, which is here. We're next to the Hay Lane condominiums known as Neilsex Commons. We're across from the Darien Sport Shop and the Central Business District and the Central Corbin Sub District. So Sport Shop's here, this is the Bank of America building. And we are in a transition because I-95 bifurcates this service business zone, which runs all the way up to here. And we are, we're next to the transfer station, more commonly referred to as the Town Dump. So we have a variety of uses adjacent to us. And what we are seeking to do in the text change, which is exhibit A of the application, is we are seeking to add two little notes in section 756 pertaining to the height, maximum height in feet and maximum building coverage. And we're keeping the 20, 20 foot, 20% building coverage and 25% building height, except C note E. And note E is highlighted in yellow at the bottom of that text. And that says, basically, that we are four properties that are served by public water and sewer, not less than three acres in size, so they've got to be big lots. And they're located within 1,000 feet of the central business district. The commission may pursuant to special permit approval, allow building coverage to increase from 20% to 25% and building height up to 30 feet. So we're asking for a 5% increase in coverage and a 5-foot increase in building height.
Can I stop you there for a second, Wilder?
Sure.
Can you go right to exhibit C?
Sure.
In your, in your book?
Yep.
And then go to exhibit B?
That's the building coverage.
Yeah, so do C first.
And then exhibit B.
Because I think that's a great graphic, your neighbors.
So looking at these, if you look at the three, there are three properties that are affected by this text amendment. Whole Foods Market, our property, and the Jaguar Land Rover dealership. Those are the only three acre properties within 1,000 feet of the central business district. And the 1,000-foot line is called out in the dashed yellow in exhibit C. So if you look at where we are, our building coverage is, and this is the building coverage chart, exhibit C. If you look at the central business district, you can have up to 100% building coverage there. If you look at the DBR zone, which affects the Hay Lane condominiums, they can have up to 25%. The educational building is in the MU zone, that's 25% coverage allowed. The town transfer station is 25%. The Nielsen property, the DO zone, is 25%.
Both sides of downtown.
Police station. So we are surrounded by 25% building coverage or more, up to central business district intensity of 100% building coverage. Why would this little pocket be constrained with 20%? It doesn't make sense.
Okay, and then can you talk about exhibit B?
Exhibit B. So we'll go to exhibit B, which is.
Page prior to the package.
Oh, you're saying exhibit B in the package, actually it's exhibit E, I think, in the package.
Exhibit B in this one.
Okay, so the, I don't have a blow up with that, but this summarizes everything. If you look at that exhibit B, it says, if you look at it, building coverage is one column, building height is the other column. We go through the various zones adjacent to it. SB zone, 20% and 25 feet. The MU zone is 25 and 30 feet. And there's a nump that allows us to go in the municipal overlay zone, that's the dump and the, and the police station, up to 40 feet. The DBR overlay zone is 20%, but note C allows up to 25% in terms of building coverage and 28 feet in building height. CBD, 100% building coverage, 28 feet, you can go up to 35 feet in the CBD. If you look at the Corbin Sub District, it's 100% building coverage and up to 70 feet in some areas, and 50 feet along the post road. In the DO zone, which is the Nielsen Office Park, it's 20% now, but note D allows up to 25% and a 35-foot building height. We are basically a highly, you know, we're a transition zone between the intense central business district and the more residential areas outside of the central district. We're highly intense with I-95 coming through, the post road. Why wouldn't you give us a little relaxation? And frankly, we need it in order to meet the requirements that BMW is imposing on the dealership.
Okay. That pretty much is the gist of it, right?
That's the gist. This is like a little area, a little pocket that you have recognized in your plan of conservation and development. When you look at that exhibit F in your package, I reviewed the various areas of the plan of conservation and development, starting with the town's vision statement on page 8, where they say downtown or traditional neighborhood commercial centers or corridors through scale, character, and density should create a strong sense of place for living, shopping, and dining, and add to the vitality of the community. We think Whole Foods, we and the Jaguar dealership add to the vitality of the community. We serve mostly a local population. And because of upgrade requirements, we would have to start moving our service off-site if we weren't able to make some improvements and get this text amendment. So local purchasers of BMWs will no longer be able to service them here, at least. So, local purchasers of BMWs will no longer be able to service them here, at least not the way they can now.
That's outside of what we're doing.
I, I agree, but in, in terms of this, we want to maintain and enhance downtown. That's chapter eight of the Plan of Conservation and Development. If you look at page seventy, I highlight that one of the, uh, objectives here is to encourage appropriate development. We highlighted the policy number three, ensure appropriate transitions from downtown to adjacent residential areas. This is creating a transition. We're at twenty percent now, everyone else is at twenty-five percent. We want to go from twenty-five foot building height to higher. You know, it makes sense. If you look at chapter eleven, guiding the business and economic development, here we want to encourage appropriate business and economic development on page one oh eight. And we highlight the two oh six P O C D, which said that while we're primarily a residential community, the quality of residential in such, a life in such a community is enhanced by well-planned commercial and other support uses within town. We're one of those support uses. And if you look at the policies under promoting business and economic development, you want to continue to encourage business and economic development to provide jobs, goods, services, and enhance the tax base and to continue to encourage vibrant commercial areas.
And then we got it.
We got it.
All right. We are, we're identified. Okay, so the town plan has a million, not a million, but many, many references to support our being here.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so...
I'm making him do it.
This is going to clash you. You owe me five minutes.
I'll be up next.
Well, you can dock his time. If you look at sixteen.
Okay.
The ledge road opportunity area is defined by the mapping in your Plan of Conservation and Development. That includes our sites, all three of these sites, there are two of them, Whole Foods and our site. We are also listed as a possible development opportunity area in the chart of the mapping of that. So we have both, we're suitable for a variety of uses.
Frank is opposed.
Okay, so, I mean, the town plan fully supports this change.
Okay.
And we think it's consistent with what you did in two thousand and seven when you approved the Whole Foods amendment that allowed Whole Foods to come to the site right next to us.
Who represented Whole Foods?
I did. It's awful. It was...
Okay, hold on.
Jim Rand. George, any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Ye- yes, I did.
Fantastic.
Just, just, that's enough. I, uh, I'm curious about whether you looked at what is a thousand feet from the other end of this S B zone and I, I wonder if there's any three acre...
There's nothing near the central business district. You go from the central business district on the other side to the S B one, S B two, and D O zone.
Okay.
D B zones.
And D B zones.
So...
So you don't have S B on that end of town, on the other side of the central business district. So it's really relevant to just this end.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
And you don't have typically three acre properties on that other end either.
Well, that's what I was curious about, yeah. But, okay, good. Um, I, so I'm, I'm interested that the Land Rover building would be included here and I'm curious about the thirty foot issue. Um, it, it, it wouldn't be thirty feet already, would it?
No, it's, that means twenty-five, I represented that one.
Yeah, but the library is probably...
Library's in a municipal use zone and they can go to forty-five, forty-four.
So, I'm just thinking if suddenly the Land Rover building became thirty feet, would that look odd? And I guess it would not, given the library there, so that if it were permitted there, that wouldn't be such a problematic. So the other, other thing I wanted to nitpick just a little in your, uh, sub E here is, says for a property that is blah, blah, blah. For a property, is that, I, I'm thinking, in fact, you have two addresses for your site, so are you one property, two lots?
We're one, we are, although it's, it's one forty ledge road. Frankly, I think under a prior application, we had to merge the properties. And if you wanted to, as we come in for our application requires to do that, that's not a problem.
So you're referring to a, a three acre lot?
Together, the two properties, one thirty-six and one forty ledge road exceed just slightly.
The two tax, I think the two tax lots, right?
They're two separate tax lots.
So, so you, you think it's to say a property that is three acres should, I mean, we're talking two lots, what, what?
Well, the use here is on two. If you want us to set, to merge the two lots, I, I don't think we'd have any issue with that.
How about I could do it for a property under common ownership?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, the common beneficial ownership here is, um, the Colari family.
They should, they should...
With a couple LLCs and...
Yeah, so you know what? This is something in a site plan application, if that's a question, and you said to us, look, you got to merge the properties, we'll do it. It's not a problem.
Yeah.
And then it becomes one three acre plus lot as opposed to two separate tax lots. Property benefit is still a tax point of view, but...
So, so should it be, uh...
I wouldn't want to say properties, a, a, a lot?
Yeah, should it be a lot?
Well, the reason I said properties, that's the language we used in Whole Foods, the Whole Foods amendment, it, it just lifted it for this one. So if you want to change property to lot, we would probably ought to do it, or you guys ought to do it on seven fifty-seven G, which was the Whole Foods amendment. We've worked with property before. It's been there for twenty years.
I refer to the pros.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a good point. And you know what? I don't want to diminish it, I'm just saying we work with property and it seems to work.
Thank you, I'm good.
Good. I'd like Craig because...
Hold on one second. Larry, Jennifer, I don't know.
No, I agree. Also, you were here when we were doing all these changes? Just saying.
Just saying.
Just saying. You know, we were here many hours. I saw your face.
So, um, I'd like Craig to talk a little bit about the site plan that we're, because you should have an idea, if you're going to make this happen, what are you likely to see in the conceptual site plan and some of the things we already did?
Right, so we're flipping to, um, exhibit G?
Yes.
And Jeremy, just before you go, Craig, I'm sorry. Are you in comparison with, is that Wilder, that there's no other properties that are within a thousand feet of an S B zone? I mean, it's got this here.
Uh, within a thousand feet of the C B D, that's correct. This is the only, the other service business zones in town are, uh, the florist up on Camp Avenue. We have the service business all the way, Spring Hill Florist, thank you. All the way on the east end of town, TD Bank or Two Cheese, that area. Uh, there's service business along the Rothen Avenue with two gas stations out or three gas stations, another service business zone. So really, the only service business area near the C B D is this area here, uh, which includes the BMW parcel.
And to answer your question later, when we're talking about the library and Land Rover, I think in the real world, you want to be more concerned with, you know, certain because that's got a higher coverage and a higher height.
Yeah, already, yeah.
You know, so I don't know how big your library is, but...
And then there's another service business zone, which I forgot, which is Rings End on West Avenue.
Is that, that might be the one, because if you go back to that...
I think it's just beyond. I think Craig checked that out. Craig and I, if I recall, we discussed it, that is a little bit beyond. Rings End is on the back of the Rings End parcel is a little bit beyond a thousand feet.
Really, well? Okay, 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 I'm thinking, I'm thinking the Coons lot.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in close, Rings End is over here. Yeah, the thousand feet is here.
Okay. The Coons lot, okay. Okay, all the commissioners, we're going to go to, I think, exhibit G as in G.
I have a few exhibits.
Identify yourself for the representative, sir.
You know, the first thing on my page that says intro.
Can I just say that?
That is true.
My name is Craig Flaherty. I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I am also a principal and senior engineer with Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stanford and Wilton. On this project, uh, we are providing survey engineering and, uh, land use consulting services. So you are looking at a few exhibits that, uh, were developed for this hearing after we filed the initial application, uh, so that the record is clear. I'm going to hand in eleven by seventeen versions that you are looking at. There's one for everyone. Pass it on. As Wilder said, uh, this is to give you an idea of, uh, if we were granted this text amendment, how we intend to use it on this property. This is conceptual in nature. Obviously, there are a lot of details to get from where we are today to a full site plan application, uh, that we would have to make subsequently to this. In fact, in addition to a site plan application, we're going to get an application, uh, from E P C, approval from E P C, uh, for a little encroachment into the Fifty Foot Wetlands setback. Uh, we're going to need, uh, approval from A R D associated with special permit and, uh, we will need, um, a variance that has to do with, um, an angle of line on the front. The, uh...
Just, can I interrupt you one second? Just for the record, I own a BMW that I bought from Colari, which I think some other commissioners might, but I can see, view this application on non-bike.
You will be charged, you will be charged the same amount for service as everybody else.
Apparently only a vehicle, I should say.
So on the far right here, we're looking at the existing condition. The existing coverage is in the tan color are the existing buildings, the gray color are the existing drive swaths and parking areas, and the green color is existing landscaping. Uh, so the way the building is used today, the front portion of the building is showroom with, uh, customer service areas on the lower level and then office and administrative support on the upper level. And then a large portion of the back of the building is all dedicated to service. So there's fourteen, I believe, service bays opening in the northerly direction here. There's a service entrance here. There is also a second service building in the back, um, that has six service bays that open to the east and five service bays that open to the west. And basically, as we all call a car dealership, any spot that is paved has a car on it. Generally, the customer areas stop about here where there's a fence. And then there are, uh, this is the inventory and service storage area for the lot. Uh, there are off-site parking leased from the town, uh, in this location, and they also have a lease agreement with Whole Foods to lease some of their, uh, parking spaces non weekend.
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, sir.
You might want to change Wilton, Connecticut to Darien, Connecticut.
Oh, well, that's a wonderful mistake. Yeah, it's good. Look, I'll, I'll get my marker out before we end. Might have been the last car dealership I was from down there. Uh, so that's the existing condition, um, on the right. So, uh, and you can see the cars are parked here and it's setting, uh, that Wilder described previously. So what are we going to do if this text amendment is granted? We're going to put together a site plan and special permit application and come back to you for a very detailed plan that's going to show something very close to what we're looking at in the middle here. So, uh, a significant portion of the building is torn down. So this portion of the building remains, it's the showroom with the administrative offices upstairs, but everything else goes. And also, in the back, the existing smaller service building gets demolished. This half of the building, one of the requirements, uh, from BMW is that there is covered drop-off for customers coming with their vehicles to get them served. And so, uh, folks will be able to drive into here, have that covered drop-off experience, hand their car over to an employee who then takes it back into the service areas. So that's the function of the middle portion of this building. And then the function of the back portion will likely be a showroom on the first floor and administrative offices above, similar to, uh, the arrangement in the front. And I'm going to transition that to show you a, can you pick me up on it from here?
What do you think?
I'm getting... I won't talk, I'm going to walk and I'll come back.
Hold on one second. Craig, can I hold on one second?
You can take it with you.
I know, I was going to say, let me interrupt. Do we want to go this deep into this?
This is all hypotheticals.
Well, well, I think one of the issues is there are a few neighbors here and one of their issues, which they relayed to me prior to the meeting, was the fact that if you change the regs conceptually, you're not quite sure what we're looking at. So Craig and Wilder have tried to respond a little bit tonight to that, just to give a sense of what might be possible, some of the issues they're up against. But you're right, Jennifer, this is not a site plan hearing, it's not a special permit, it's just the zone change. But just to give a flavor for some of the issues they're going to have to reconcile...
I'll, I'll fast forward to those things that I think, um, the neighbors might have interest in.
Yeah, because I see it's dated today, so obviously dated today.
Uh, well, I didn't, but, uh...
Craig, take it with you.
Dated the latest version today. I'm just...
Take it right in front of your hand.
I'm not going to show you the cross section here. The reason we need the additional height is because we have a high service, or a showroom area with high ceilings with office above. That's why we're asking for additional height here. And, uh, now I'll talk about the back building.
But that's additional height that's in the back of the existing showroom building.
Right, right here. And so you... This, this is the cross section through the new building. So this is the Whole Foods parking lot. This is our, our parking area right in front here. This is the proposed new building at the thirty foot height, which would have the showroom at this level and the administrative offices above. You can see right now, the elevation of the D P W lot next door is actually taller than the building that we're proposing. There's quite a hill, quite a retaining wall there that's existing. So, um, the building that is closer to Middlesex Commons is the proposed new service building in the rear lot. So basically, we would be replacing what is a surface parking lot with a small service building with a larger service building with parking on top. Looking at the cross section of that building, the part closest to Middlesex Commons complies with current height. This is a nineteen or twenty or twenty-one foot high building, certainly less than twenty-five feet high. Where we need the additional height for this building, we chose to push as far away from Middlesex Commons as possible. Um, and this is where you have a service bay where you have to elevate a car and work under it. We wanted to have a full height smart storage area above. So that's where we get, when you, when you have a extra height first floor, trying to get a second floor within twenty-five feet is a problem. We know this from retail, and this is a new spin on it with the service trying to... So this is where the extra height comes into play on the rear building, but the rest of the building complies with the reg. So we could put a building here today, uh, smaller without any text amendment, similar to what we're showing you. But very specifically, we wanted to, um, try to be sensitive to neighbors. We approached this in that vein. Yes?
So the picture taken by Gleason on eleven twelve nineteen, if I'm looking out, that I'm looking at car, car, and then that lip, right? So I just want to make sure my perspective is up.
Yes.
So they'd be looking just like there's cars now, but then there'd be a lip that would be for the, what's going on inside the building.
Yeah, so to, to orient you, we took a cross section, uh, basically aligned with these windows. So when you look at Middlesex Commons, uh, on the left side, right about here, it's user with the aerial. Let's put the aerial. There you go. There are three condos right here, and those are the three condos you see there. Most of the side is, is windowless. There are windows on each of the three condos, on the west side of the condos that do look south today. Uh, we did provide you with a couple of photos that they allowed us access to their units to, to get a sense for what they're looking at, um, but also to fulfill a request that they had, that we eventually put in, uh, a rendering of what the new building's going to look like from that perspective. And so we took a cross section right from that closest set of windows, and that's where this one is run, so you can see that right here. The next thing you see in this photo, this is a garage. Um, there's an eight foot stock, stockade fence here, so if you're standing on the property, you can't see past the stockade fence. There's an eight foot fence between the garages, so if you're standing in the driveway between the garages, you can't see past the fence. So there's a garage here, there's a garage here. And then the last unit that could potentially have views of this rear lot, uh, is one unit, uh, the closest unit in this location that's looking at the back of the service building today. And so what we're trying to do here is hopefully improve that existing view. They have planted some arboreals in front of two of the units, and those arboreals do a pretty good job of obstructing the view from the first floor. and those arborees do a pretty good job of obstructing the view from the first floor. But you still have views from the second floor, as indicated in this photo. So the plan again is to have rooftop parking. You can't see it very clearly on this exhibit, but we have identified a location for an architectural screen that's eight feet tall. Our idea is to put up a decorative screen with some sympathetic architecture that will screen that rooftop parking, and that would be an ARB or PNC site special permit detail, but that we're thinking about it. We could mask lights on the inside of that screen for a low-level lighting. Again, details for site plan. But very specifically, we saw an opportunity to provide more landscaping at a higher elevation. So the existing parking lot right now is down at this level, kind of consistent with where we're putting the first floor of the building. But we're, we're looking at putting a planter around the ramp that goes up to the roof, which is 10 feet wide here and 20 feet wide after it leaves the ramp, and be able to place arborees or some other appropriate screening in that planter. So the hope is that the number of cars that you are looking at is significant to reduce. We simply can't fit cars, even with the rooftop parking. We're reducing the total number of cars on this rear lot, that we can, with sympathetic architecture, make it look better than looking at a parking lot today. And then with the addition of landscaping, soften that entire view. So I guess what we need to prove to you tonight is that we have the room and tools necessary through your special permit process to do right by the neighbors, and that is our intention. And we can state that again on the record tonight. We will continue to meet with them and address their concerns and hopefully get to a point where they like the view that we're creating. And that you have that in your hands, so that we can move forward with the text amendment and then come back with the site plan.
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, sir.
That eight-foot-high architectural fence?
Yeah.
I know you were on the application for federal with Walmart, with, not Walmart, I'm sorry. We were doing rooftop parking with Walgreens.
We are.
And they designed some kind of nice thing, so we're.
Yes, they did.
Same kind of idea.
The idea is you would not be able to see through that screen. It will be opaque, and it will be friendly to the architecture of the building.
Thank you. Okay. You all set?
I think that's good enough.
Okay. Anybody in the commission like to ask questions relative to this? Do you want to, yeah? Now, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? Seeing someone, please come on. Another familiar face.
How are you? Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Harmony装饰, Sannequin, Tennessee. I'm here tonight on behalf of the neighbor, Middlesex Commons condominium. And we are here to ask for a continuance of this application so that we can continue to work with Mr. Gleason and his, and his client to have a better understanding of how the text change is going to impact the intensity of both the view and the experience of the property owners next door. They did have a meeting last week. I'm sure it took quite a bit of time to put together these applications, but as you know, text change application doesn't require a personal notice to your neighbors. So they did have an opportunity to meet, but not until last week. And so I'm really glad that they blew up these pictures here tonight. I think they're very helpful, and the cross-sections are also very helpful. Thank you. And I just got involved myself in the last few days. So one question that we started to talk about earlier, that Mr. Gleason talked about earlier, we're talking about, why, why is 20% in SB zone appropriate? It should be larger. Others are, other neighboring zones have a larger one. And to me, that's because the SB allows industrial uses, like a service auto repair facility. And that's why the, the coverage and the heights are smaller. What you can see from these pictures is that right now, while these property owners do look out on a parking lot, they are looking down at a parking lot. And as you can see from the cross-section, the parking lot is now being raised and brought closer to them. So while a lot of the, the design elements that have been proposed to tonight and fresh to me about raised screening and screening wall, those are great. And those are things that we will definitely be interested in, in seeing here and learning more. But we certainly need more time with them to understand what the impact of this text change is, because it could be, it could be significant. And the other thing I think you should consider is adding additional special controls or design standards to this text amendment to ensure that the things that have been offered tonight are added to your special permit process. In the SB zone, such special conditions and controls exist for other uses and may be useful here. There, maybe we want to take a look, or the commission wants to take a look at Mr. Gleason a little bit more closely about the neighboring uses at, around Jaguar. I have not myself looked at those. I know during a Whole Foods exercise that the, the participation between the condominium owners, this commission, and the applicant was very extensive and in the end worked out, worked out just fine, although not, not just fine at the beginning, but in the end. And so that may be a useful tool. It's something we want to consider adding. We realize this adds a little extra time to the applicant's time table, especially considering that he may not be meeting next month. We think that probably can make really good progress because of that extra time and given the holidays. So we hope that you will take this into consideration tonight and give us additional time to work this out. Thank you. I think two members of the condominium board are here tonight would also like to speak.
Just, can I say next, you're more concerned with the, any, the future potential site plan application, which is get a key off of this zoning text change?
I, I, the text change itself right now is something that we need to look a little more closely at, because the reason that we have these coverage and these land use controls is to, to prevent, I think, certain expansions of uses that are not consistent between a DB's and a DB zone and an SB zone. There's a pretty significant departure when we look through what the, even the permitted uses and special permit uses are. And while there are certainly supportive sections of the town plan of conservation and development that would support this, we talk about support uses. Support uses are many, many things. Having a, a service repair facility in the town is certainly a good thing. Keeping these types of businesses that have been longstanding, great businesses in Darien, a good thing, certainly. And those are consistent with many of the goals of the town plan. But you don't need to bring a parking lot closer to a residential zone. This residence was established in 19, I think, 85, 1987. And the SB zone has been consistent since that time. So certainly, there was an expectation when those were built and the people who invested specifically, I think, on the border to the SB zone had an expectation of what might be there. And when we take a look at, from the existing to the proposed, this goes into site planning, but it also goes into massing.
You have to use my camera.
It goes not just to the site plan, but to what, what massing is permitted by the regulation. Right now, we see the building, the white service building, and it only takes up maybe a quarter, maybe a third of the shared border. It's now going to expand all the way out. And that's not necessarily just a site plan issue. That's something that is going to come, and I understand that there can be some development back there now. But it's really the height, the massing, bringing the cars closer. These are things that we'd like to work out with them. And while we do certainly trust that they want to be a good neighbor and bring some of these design controls to make a better site plan, I think it would be more comprehensive for the commission to require those as special permit requirements when you have an SB special permit development bordering a residential zone and a less intense zone like the DPW. And I think those are text change considerations that we'd like the board to consider, that we would like to work out with Mr. Gleason and his client before we get to the site plan stage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, can you just state your name and address to the record?
My name is Jack Regan. I live at Five Hill Lane in the condominium in the Middlesex Commons. I want to be very clear about our purpose in being here today. First of all, where are we? Think about Leroy Avenue, think about the Darien Sports Shop. Our entrance to our nine-acre property with probably a value of at least $39 million is adjacent, we share a common borderline with BMW. Now, very clear about our position. We're speaking to the application of BMW Darien for changing the text. That's what they're looking for. We are asking the board to depart any action on the proposed change to the regulations. We cannot support or reject, support or reject the changes until we have a clearer, stronger, more definitive, more detailed picture, particularly of the site plan that they have put forward. We're not saying we oppose the total plan of BMW's, but we are asking you center this into the side for now, until we and the board can get some added facts and written commitments from BMW. We wish the board to become aware of why we are in this position. I cannot say how long BMW, the law firm, have been working on this, but we first found out about it on Monday, the 4th of November, when they called and asked us for a meeting. We accommodated them. We met with them the next night. All of the board members were available, and we met with them the next night. Some of the comments that were made here today are a result of that session with them. But let's go back a minute. In their 20-or-so-page submission to this board, not once in the narrative do they mention the Middlesex Commons, their neighbor. That's not very neighborly. Not at all. So the combination of the short notice for tonight and the fact that there's not a mention here, there is a mention. If you had a microscope and you could look at their Exhibit A up in this corner, you might see the word Middlesex Commons, not before. It raises too many questions the way they brought this thing forward. They didn't have an obligation to tell us, but they didn't tell us till just before this meeting. That's the only way to describe it. And I think there are questions that we haven't had even the opportunity to raise about the change in the text before going forward with their plan. We don't oppose their plan. We don't support it yet, but we don't oppose it. Again, their behavior has not been neighborly in that sense. We could probably work something out, but when they avoid the words rooftop parking, they're throwing a curveball. That's what it is. We raise the question, how much rooftop parking? Are they going to double-deck it? Very common in the automobile business. We absolutely have a question like that. Are there other places where this zoning change might be applied to stimulate other zoning changes, 23 feet to 25 feet, 25 to 28, the growth? Now, they are there probably long before we are, but we have our concerns. We ask you, hold off, don't make the text changes. Give us time, give our attorney time to look at this thing a little more carefully, and give the board more time to look at it. There are mistakes, even in their presentation. This is not Wilton, Connecticut. This is down in Connecticut. I mean, the giant things that aggravate people and annoy people. Take the time to look at it carefully. Give us the time to look at it carefully. Give our attorney the time to look at it carefully. Give your staff a chance to look at it carefully. Please take the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to dispute the application? Sure. Take your time.
Good evening. A very quick comment. My name is Graham Powell. I live in Hale Lane, which you may have heard of. And I live near the end of Hale Lane and the BMW parking lot currently. My only comment is an extreme concern about the proposal which has been put forward for the rooftop parking. I, I'm not quite clear with this meeting, whether we're just on the verbiage of the zoning change, but I want to be certain that no actual implied approval by this board is given to the concept of rooftop parking, which I think is the ultimate fire hazard, as well as being totally ugly. And since I live nearest to the rooftop parking, I'm extremely concerned about the fire hazard, because to me, no roof means no sprinklers, no heat detectors, no smoke detectors, no nothing except a blaze, and I don't like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we already have approved rooftop parking in our town.
Yes.
One is, what did we say, early Walgreens? And you can kind of sort of.
Which is going to get started very soon, yes.
Right, and you can probably say a couple other, the American Medical Office Building.
Right.
Is that a rooftop parking, maybe nothing. Okay.
A question, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to come up to the microphone, please. Thank you very much.
I agree. You're welcome. Is that, is that particular rooftop parking, is that adjacent to a residential area?
Yeah.
It is?
Okay. The commission's next meeting is Tuesday, January 7, 2020, at 8:00 PM in Room 206. We needed authorization from Attorney Gleason to extend it beyond the 35-day period to leave a hearing open.
Did we decide on December 5 yet?
We have not decided on an extra date. It would be up to the commission. I guess it also depends on tonight's agenda.
Okay, well, that's probably the commission's. Do you think we should keep the hearing open or close the hearing tonight?
Can you?
It seems, it's, it's, it seems to me that the, the issues that I understand are concerned, at least concerned to some of the members, are appropriately addressed in the application itself, not for the rule change, but for the, the permit. I think the applicant, by showing, indicating pretty much what their intentions are, helps. But I don't know that the rule change has to be held up, because they're going to have to jump through all these hoops in front of and in conjunction with the earbuds, with the neighbors, when they, when they file the application to put up the, to do the work.
It's at the, it's at the request of the commission, too.
But before you decide, would it be appropriate for us to at least respond?
Sure.
Although we weren't required to provide notice to the neighbors, we did. Every one of them got legal notice individually. I also reached out to the board.
How many condos are in there?
Do you know all?
36, I think.
The proof and mail.
The proof and mailing was submitted several weeks ago. We.
The mailing went out on or about November 8th. Uh, November 7th it was sent out in the mail, but I guess Wilder also called them before that.
I called the board chairman, introduced myself, and he graciously set up a meeting the next night, which was November 5. And we met with a number of these gentlemen, and then I personally went to Graham Powell's condominium, which is the last one and the one that is, has the most prevalent views of the parking lot. And I took the pictures that Craig had blown up. And my view is this is more of a site plan issue than a text amendment issue. Whole Foods didn't have special bells and whistles, additional things attached to it when we adopted that change in 2007. And the condominium still took a three-year appeal on that. And so they were not, that was not something that was worked out. It was something that was settled in court after several years of litigation and unceasing resistance. Now, this applicant, in contrast to Whole Foods, has done numerous things for this condo, unasked, and for which they got slacked on the wrist, because the condo asked us to tear out some screening on their property. The bottom line. The bottom line, I think that, as Graham said, it really does make sense to move forward if you can. We believe that the text amendment is clear, that if something comes up in, it's asking a lot for us to try and engage architects and engineers to come up with a pretty comprehensive site plan that its details, because they want a before and after picture. We gave them this concept in the section that you saw. That very same section was submitted to them at our meeting, so that we understand where we're going. I am really confident that the picture that you see out this window, which is Graham, which is Graham Powell's second story window from the interior, you're going to see a much improved view. You're not gonna see as much parking, and it's gonna be located further away than the parking that you can see right now.
Graham, that's going into the site plan.
Yeah, and it's site plan related. And if there's something that they raise, we have always worked in good faith with them. We have always provided them, met with them. We will do that as part of this process, but we didn't think engaging them in the text change, you know, well in advance made a lot of sense, because we couldn't provide them with the details.
Okay. You guys, anything better? Jeff?
So.
It's, the question on the table is either hearing open or closed again.
So I have no issue with.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say that I agree with, you know, what you just said. Sounds to me like something that could be worked out in the, in the site plan, and there's gonna be a lot of time between now and when that happens.
Yeah, the proposed coverage to twenty-five percent makes sense to me. I do understand that this application was submitted to us on October eleventh and that the residents in the commons was not, they were not noticed until a week ago. So I can appreciate they're wanting some time on it. Hmm.
Let's ask George.
Yeah, what do you think, George?
I think I would give them the time.
Okay, then I'm with you.
And just as my explanation, I have to say, your forthrightness at the beginning of this and saying that you met with staff four months or so ago about this suggests this has been given a fair amount of consideration over a long period of time. I have the utmost regard for Attorney Gleason, as I'm sure he knows, but I believe he's been the only author so far to have worked on this, as far as I know, anyway. And I think another counsel taking a look at it, as you know, I was concerned about that word, the property, so it's not a bad idea to have an attorney take some time to look at it as well. Obviously, a seasoned attorney who knows what she's looking at, I think, can be helpful as well. And I think the notice, the notice and the meeting kind of reminds me of when the aid finally got to Ukraine. So we won't go too far into that, but the horse is out of the barn. So anyway, I think, I understand the implications of the time. Hopefully, this is kind of a slow period, I would suppose. Anyway, I will come down and give you more time.
Okay, what about December fifth?
I'm not here. Just to be clear.
December fifth is, I believe, two weeks from today?
It's a Thursday.
On December fifth, Thursday?
Yeah, I'm not here on December.
Whatever that, you had a potential meeting that you asked us last time, because we were gonna close out a bunch of stuff before the year end.
It would be December third, two weeks from today, I guess. I guess that's the question is, would two weeks be enough time with Thanksgiving in between if the commission said, you know what, two weeks? I guess that's.
We were talking about having a meeting that day anyway.
What is the, the council's, the Middlesex?
I just had a, I had a comment that, that needs to be with text change. It's not about the dates, so I don't really answer to.
Well, what's about the dates? Because you guys are coming here and you want time, so is that enough time?
You're here? I'm not here through Thanksgiving. Not here.
I'm here, and I can make myself available. And, but in terms of.
You're home next week.
Yeah.
Between now and next week.
Could you step up to the mic if you're gonna?
We're just having a sidebar conversation.
Jackie, I know Jackie well. I'm happy to work with her. In our interest, we would like to make it sooner. We recognize that you feel that they need more time. If Jackie can provide something, comments about amendments and things quickly, I think we could work through it in a way that's meaningful, and December third would work, I would hope. And if for some reason we're unable to do so, we'll kick it over to January. But at least, let's, I mean, I really would like to hold, because we don't wanna invest a ton of money in architecture without knowing we've got the rules that allow it.
Okay, so it's a two-part question. Why don't we talk about having a meeting on December third? And then two, propose it to some.
It sounds like we keep the hearing open.
The sense I'm getting from the commission is, leave the hearing open. December third would be a special meeting if it appears we can get a quorum.
I'm with him. I'll go with you there.
Okay.
And could I ask, just for the record, is there anything else you want from us by that meeting? Is there anything you would like us to produce for you to?
We'll talk about it between now and then, we'll see.
Okay, and let staff know, you know what's going on.
Okay, so this hearing is not adjourned. You're gonna be continued till the next meeting that we have.
Tuesday, December third, two thousand and nineteen, two weeks from tonight, eight PM. It's likely to be in Room two oh six of Town Hall upstairs. Thank you.
Yes, Jeff? We've got a time issue here. If it flips over, if it flips over to January, is that correct?
At that time, attorney, if there's something that happens in December, Attorney Gleason would have to grant you a different time. We're still within the proper time.
December third is for this.
Yes.
January is for that.
Correct.
So if it gets pushed to January, we'll have to do.
We wanted to ask, we wanted to tell us now.
I'm optimistic.
All right, so that here is. Next item off the table. Coastal Site Plan Review Number Three Forty-four, Flood Damage Prevention Application Number Three Ninety-nine, Michael and Tina DeSoto, Twenty-one, Tenon Island Road. Supposed to construct several additions to existing, residing, could expand on existing garage, could have a new second garage, try to driveway, new cover entry, play yard installation, still on the water natural system and perform the needed site load activities within the area. The zero point nine three acre subject property is located on South Side, Tenon Road, approximately twenty feet north of the intersection of Schindler Road, which is on access to Route Number Sixty-seven, as well, fifteen hour yard zone. This is a nice site that is near the Porkey Club, down in Porkey. Okay, anything I just, for you?
This is both a coastal site plan review and flood damage prevention application. It's basically on one side of the Contempton Island Road, the other side is the water. You've been to the site, you've seen there's some minor additions and alterations going on now, but those did not trigger coastal site plan review or flood work, the work in the flood zone, rather, but the proposal shown before you, which is the new garage and some house additions, and some of this new drainage system dealing with water quality. We have both the engineer and the architect here to walk you through the application and some of the issues they want to bring to your attention.
This is a legal market forming a lot, right? Is it less than an acre, it's on a one acre zone?
That's correct. It's less than an acre in a one acre zone, slightly less, and you can see they have frontage on Contempton Island Road, and you can see on the plan that there's a driveway which goes through this property, which is a shared driveway which also serves other lots.
Okay, so do they, they didn't trigger any variances for this, did they?
No, no variance at all. Everything here is permitted as a right.
Okay.
And all the work will comply with the plan regulations.
Okay, sir.
Christopher Pegliaro, Christopher Pegliaro Architects, Three Twenty, Oak Road, Darien. I happen to be on the planning and zoning commission in Wilton, I'm not sure I'm worthy to present to you.
Yes, sure.
This application before you is for several small additions to the house that, can I pull this closer so I can reach?
Sure, I would love it if you did.
Okay. Anybody interested in this?
Why don't you add it, well?
Everybody good? Can you see the mic?
I can see.
Everybody good? There are, there are several additions that actually touch the ground, which I guess triggers this, which is a one hundred and one foot addition to the front entry. There is a seventy-eight foot, I apologize, a sixteen foot addition to the rear, which is the Contempton Island roadside, and then there's a new single car garage that's about three hundred square feet, and we're expanding the existing two-car garage by a total of one hundred and thirty-six feet. The addition to the east is cantilevered, and I guess not subject to this conversation technically. And there are two balconies that are cantilevered from the existing house up top here. The interesting thing about this project is it is currently in an AE fifteen zone, which is landward of Scott's Cove, and it drops to an AE thirteen, I can get near the Contempton Island Road. I had submitted to Jeremy, did you distribute the information about the flood? Mr. and Mrs. Castle are retaining race coastal engineers. There are several properties that have come to their attention, that several properties in the Contempton Island area are mis-mapped, and I think two or three of them have already received the loaners, which is the revision of the flood map. We have information that I had submitted to Jeremy races on this, and they find that this is also mis-mapped and that this house will eventually be taken out of the flood zone altogether. So not the, not the entire property, but the house itself and the work that we're proposing. So this is yet another one that's there, and I guess FEMA is giving everybody a hard time about them actually doing the remapping, so it's being done on a lot-by-lot basis in the area. I have with me Harry Rocheford from McCord Engineering. He can speak to the site planning and the stormwater management and drainage that we're doing. There was also, I believe, he'll be able to present that V one hundred A has been started and the health department has approved that they just haven't mapped it yet.
Correct.
So if you, you wanna go through the architecture or is it pretty much a site plan for you?
It's a hundred and ninety-six square feet, right?
Well, it's a combination, just to be clear.
Right, you're right.
The combination of additions is six hundred and thirty-one square feet, but it does include some of that cantilevered stuff. I mean, we're really adding about a hundred and seventeen square feet of living space. They're really architectural gestures just to break up the old colonial box.
Okay, let's get into the site plans and the real reason why you do it.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Harry Roche with McCord Engineering.
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
Sure. R O C H E, Diaz and Victor, I L L E.
Thank you.
No problem. So as Chris was saying, there is multiple additions on this property. It is within the flood zone, which, as you mentioned, the elevation is fifteen foot here, the finished floor is sixteen point five. The two garages would be below the flood elevation. One, the existing is at fourteen point four, proposed at fourteen point six. Because of that, we are proposing flood vents be installed in both of them to allow the entry and exit of floodwater in an event. This is so we don't have to take up compensatory storage elsewhere on site. We'd also be proposing a stormwater management system that is located in ours here, is designed for water quality, to collect the first flush of at least the proposed impervious surfaces, and we actually designed it for more of just what we were able to capture. You'll see there's a trench drain here in front of the garage that will capture the driveway. It will also be, there will be a yard drain replaced here. The existing one will be removed, because it will be within the foundation of the post garage, which catches lawn from the southern part of the property. It will also capture some roof leaders that currently go to surface and be routed over to the detention system.
So right now, there is no water retention system on the site at all?
Correct.
Right, and what you, what, I think we discussed, and I think when you referred it to Darren Oss, the Assistant Public Works Director, he said in this very low part of the watershed, you're right on the water, you don't need to store any water, just deal with water quality, send the water out.
That is correct. That's why we designed the system for first flush, just for the first inch of new impervious surfaces, because it is in that coastal area. Also, as Chris mentioned, the property is served by existing septic system. We went out and did soil testing on Friday with the health department. We found favorable conditions. I quoted over some correspondence between myself and Mindy with the health department to Jeremy stating that she also agreed that we found favorable conditions and a V one hundred A system would be able to be designed for this property. I guess that would be a condition of approval, that that would be a review after this hearing that we could submit that V one hundred A design.
Is that septic system really that large?
Yes, it is right here. It is designed for a five-bedroom. It was installed in two thousand and two. It is about a hundred and twenty linear feet of, I believe, thirty-inch galleries. If you were on site, it's pretty clear where it is. Mount kind of does wrap around the property, and so we did have to avoid that during soil testing, so that was, that was a tricky part, but.
Are they adding more, any more bathrooms to this property?
It is a five-bedroom house now. It'll be designed as a five-bedroom house.
All right, more bedrooms.
With the new D one hundred A, right?
Okay, you said?
Yeah, Harry said, he talked about the D one hundred area, that help went out and found it to be favorable, in their words. Clearly, the last issue here would be the driveway, which I can speak to if you want. As I mentioned earlier, the driveway, shown on the plans, is a shared driveway with the number of.
Which, which one?
Which plan was?
That's the rights of the others.
Mr. Pegliaro is showing the existing driveway, which goes through this property, and that is a shared driveway. One of the people that uses that driveway is Mr. McLean. Mr. McLean sent in a letter, you have, I believe you might have have it for the record?
Yep.
Which talks about the fact that, you know what, they may even try to work something out to get, maybe move the driveway, put in some screenings, things like that. When Fred and I talked about it, we realized that doesn't, doesn't really trigger coastal site plan review or flood damage prevention, because you're just taking an existing driveway and just moving it a few feet and adding some plantings or anything like that. So while that may come subsequent to this, I wanted to bring it to your attention, but it's not really part of this application. It's something that is likely to be worked out with the various properties.
And they already spoke.
Great.
Great.
Okay, let's get down to the line first. Gentlemen, do you guys have any questions relative to the engineering or the architecture?
I don't.
You're not?
Yep, you guys go. Okay, the shared driveway. I mean, I read some of the stuff, looked at the survey, the driveway is on the other side, is on the property line. Somebody puts the.
The easement stratos the property.
Correct, right, it's eighteen feet wide, this one's nine feet, nine feet.
It is that way, yes.
Right, so if, for some reason, this driveway, if someone opens up this driveway, then the driveway can be, quote-unquote, not shared anymore. But I mean, we're not really getting into that for this application, but that's a conversation for now and then.
Correct, it's, you can see where the driveway is now, is, you know, twenty, thirty, thirty-five feet into the castle's property, when, as you acknowledge, there's an easement right on that shared property line. And so this will give them an opportunity, I think it's a good time as this property is transitioning, different owner potentially, to put in a driveway to everyone's satisfaction and maybe a little more formal, a little further away from their driveway, gives them some, nice parking area, more privacy.
The castle has just purchased the property, I think they closed maybe, maybe three months ago, so that whole conversation is new, but they did have it the other day.
Okay. Presumably, if that easement was to be opened up, the existing driveway that you see there would be abandoned.
Right.
Correct, you mean the right of way, not the easement, the right of way?
The driveway.
The truck, the existing driveway, what Fred is saying is they could just grass it over and move the driveway into this easement, eighteen-foot easement area.
Right of way. It's a right of way.
It says right of way, yes.
Yeah, sorry, it's not an easement, sorry.
That makes sense.
And then everybody can add their own right-of-ways.
Uh, probably coming off of that shared driveway. Mr. McLean does not have frontage, is my recollection.
I don't believe.
He does not.
Okay. Okay, but that's how far this application is going to go.
Correct.
Okay.
We're totally in favor at December meeting, bud.
Talk to my son.
Sorry, I know you're not gonna be here.
I want to open up to you, is any, in the, anyone in the audience want to speak to this application? Seeing none, are we taking motion to close? Motion moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Thank you.
Thank you.
You shall go, hold the favor. All right. Okay. Moving on. We have, um, Julian Regate application number four seventy, Christopher and Kimberly Burke, Tony Schofield Farms. Uh, proposal to fill and recreate a central portion, central, west central portion of the property, create a flat lawn, and to perform related site dominant activities. The two-point-four-five acre site on the subject property is on the west side of Schofield Farms. Approximately four, fifty, four to six feet west of his intersection with Altwood Road. Um, and it's shown on the assessment map number eight, as lot three nineteen C is entirely in the R two zone. Um, this is a property on Altwood, they know pretty well, on the street.
The commission just looked at a house across the street, which is now uncompleting construction. There was a regrading on the vision there. This is the downhill property from that. So, if you're standing on this property, you're looking up at the new house. And what's very interesting about this property, if you look at the, the elevations, both on Schofield Farms, where the house is, and where they're doing the regrading. Again, this property is well over two acres, if I recall.
Two point four-five.
Two point four-five. Look at the side of the house related to the property, and, uh, I know when we went up to the site, the, the location of the grading, there's wetland, pockets of wetlands, both, I'll call it, to the southeast of the house and to the north of the house. So, there are wetlands on the property, and it's a sloping property. So, there's very little current usable yard area. Uh, and so, what the applicant is here to do is to bring in some fill and create just a little yard area. They've actually, uh, shown it right on, out in the field as well, marked it out in the field. There's a loose wall there. There's going to be some trees that will be cut. Uh, but what they'll do is make this flat area and leave the rest of the property, uh, unchanged. But, the engineer Jim Kassudis is here to talk to you a little bit about how much fill they're gonna bring, bring in to bring that backyard up. And then, as you can see, it's, they're gonna have to create a slope down towards the wetlands.
You see a lot of these, but it's like, it's like the fields on the cross fields in their backyard. So, go ahead, fire away.
Uh, Jim Kassides, Kassides Engineering. Questions, please? I think we've covered the, the, uh, general idea of what we're trying to create here. Um, yes, it is across the street, almost to the cul-de-sac of Schofield Farms, across the street from the other development that we met here about three months ago or so. The property does drain, the majority of the property drains from the, from Schofield Farms to the back. There's a wetland pocket all back in here. To the left of the driveway, as you're going towards the house, there's another water course with an associated wetland area, and this area does drain into it. Uh, we're not proposing, so driveway, Schofield Farms into the garage, and the main residence is to the, to the north of that. With the deck off the first floor that is really up high, above grade. Um, there are no proposed improvements to the house or the driveway. The only area that we're looking to regrade is marked in, in green. And it, this is, this, this line right here marks the fifty-foot setback from the wetlands. We're not encroaching within that line to stay away from any EPC permits, um, and, and to stay away from the wetlands to protect them. As you walk the property, there's an area to the north of the house in this area where the existing septic fields are, and that is the only clear area of trees, basically. But it, it's not, it's nowhere near flat or flat per. Uh, the entire property slopes down, and it flattens out within fifty feet of the wetlands and within the wetlands, uh, only in this area. So, we're trying to create an area to, um, for recreation purposes. By taking a moderate-sloped property and, and flattening it out for approximately six to seven thousand square feet, we're creating steeper slopes down below before we get to the fifty-foot round and setback line. So, the total disturbed, disturbed area is, it's about ten thousand square feet over property that's over a hundred thousand square feet, it's under ten percent disturbance. There will be anywhere between fifteen and twenty trees lost in the process. Uh, but if you walk the property, you'll see there's many, many more significant trees on this lot. Um, so, we're here tonight asking for approvals for the infill of the area, and so we can create some recreation area for the family.
Now, one of our standard questions is, it says on here nine hundred and seventy-six cubic yards. We always ask like, how many trucks is that?
That's between-
I believe it's thirty, thirty yards per truck?
Uh, eighty.
Twenty-two yards?
A truck is about twenty, you don't know, he's, I think Jim, you've assumed in the past, maybe you got seventeen to eighteen per truck?
Uh, somewhere in there, just to be, because there's gonna be some compaction on site. There's probably gonna be between forty-five and fifty truckloads of material brought to the property.
Yeah, at twenty-two yards, it's forty-four trucks.
Okay.
In terms of a period of time, you know, is it, not forty-four in one day?
No. It would be great if, by the time the top soil is stripped, because it did, so just to walk you through, the top soil that already exists, as we all know these days, is expensive, so they don't want to waste it under the fill.
So, they're using stockpile it?
The stockpile it, to bring the fill in and place it, and to use the top soil to cover the material that comes in. So, I think it'll be done in a three- to four-week period. That'll be great. I know you don't meet in December, so this gets approved, it's gonna be January. There's not gonna be any work happening in the middle of the winter, so the best case scenario, in this case, it works out well in March and April, the material to come in on site, that's prime year to, to plant and seed and get everything growing. With some hay madding on the slope, just to stabilize it until the grass holds. Um, I, I think it's a, it's a very good project to do in the, in the spring.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a regulated, how many, uh, trucks per day, unless, like, it's a private street?
Yeah, this is a private street, this area.
That's just a lot, it's a lot of fill in, in the area, and it's legit, I mean, it's legit, I mean, I get it, but... Could I have a kiss?
No, we, I, I can't think of a situation where the commission has given a limit on the number of trucks per day.
You just want a double field item, you talked about.
Yeah, that one will all the way at the end of Causeway. I, I think in a case, the commission's got a way, the, the balance between, you know, drag, having the project drag, a three-week project dragged out versus just bring the trucks in, you know? I would assume, Jim, that you probably can't get one, ten, twelve trucks in in a day, fifteen?
I can't imagine bringing more than fifteen in a day, that's still a lot of traffic.
It seems like a lot, because they're going back to the south.
That's crazy. Okay. And then, out, out of curiosity, that rock wall is back there, right? That's, you're not touching that at all, you're not gonna go near that rock wall that's back there?
We're gonna get near it on the, on the west side, but we're still gonna be on the, on the, on the upper side of the wall with the structure.
On the west side, got it, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah, the, the owners were hoping to encroach that a little bit, but after we had the, the property flagged for the wetlands and surveyed, and we offset the fifty feet, it turns out we're not encroaching it by fifty. They may cut a tree or two along that wall, just to give a little more sun to that area, but the fill cannot extend beyond it.
Okay, yeah, 'cause you have to have sun to, to, um, shine on your grass. Questions? Larry, Jim? Jim, George?
Just a quick answer, I'm just not entirely sure what the particular area is that will be the new grass. It, does it include the, uh, the, the elevation line areas, or no?
Yes.
It, it's going, so I see the silt fence, is that really the delineation of the new yard?
Yes.
Or is it less than that?
The, the flat yard's gonna be less than that, but the disturbed area's gonna be where the silt fence is placed, grating up from there. These lines close together represent a slope.
Right.
So, the grade is gonna climb on a two-to-one, basically, two horizontal to one vertical up to the flatter area where, where, basically, I'm showing the stockpile area now, but right where the land is.
The stockpile area will be the new lawn area.
Correct.
The same thing.
Okay.
It might be up, play up to the, the one-twenty-six, which is still four foot drop, and you're going down fifteen feet in total, right? About fourteen feet in total? One-thirty down to one-sixteen?
Yeah.
That's a pretty steep slope there.
You drop balls, going down hell.
You missed the goal, and you're chasing this, plus you're sleigh riding into a rock wall.
I'd put a pin above it, you know, just to-
Still over it?
Yeah. Would anybody, are you done?
Yes.
You're done. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this application? Seeing none? I think we're good, right? Taking motion to close, right? Darren Austin finds out his notes.
Yeah, Darren did review this, uh, Darren Austin, finding Assistant Public Works Director. I think he sent a memo, which you have in your packet.
Twenty-nine.
Talking about in Mr. Kassides, Kassinet memo, uh, where he talks about-
He speaks about creating a flatter area, so we have to create a slope, a steeper slope area than what already exists in order to create the flat area. We're not changing the hydrologic, uh, full patterns of the property.
And he said to just double-check, to make sure you're not disturbing the septic system?
That is correct, yes. We'll make sure of that.
Great, and they're not, they're not going anywhere near the wetland, so EPCs aren't affected.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Uh, take your motion to close?
Motion to close.
Number second, Jim? Hold the favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next one up. We have, uh, land filling regearing application number four seventy-one, Jeffrey and Sarah Dawkins, for Berry Lane, proposal to raid the existing house, construct a new residence in the general same location, construct a circular driveway, and serve new stormwater management system, and to perform, uh, related site dominant activities. The one-point-one-two acre site is located on the west side of Berry Lane, approximately fifty, hundred and feet south of intersection five mile road, and it's shown on the assessor's map number sixty-six as lot fifty-five, and the R one and R one-half zones. This is a new house that's kind of soon here, five mile road, in fourteen feet. Karen, anything you're missing so far?
Sure, it's, as you said, uh, this is a replacement house. They're putting in a new circular driveway. They're keeping the existing red barn, which is, I'll call it, to the north of the property, and they'll continue to use that as a garage. Uh, one of the, I went through with engineer Doug DeVesta, who's here tonight. The only areas that need a regrading permit from the commission is the southernmost property boundary. There's a very big piece of ledge, very big. Uh, and what property owners wish to do is remove that ledge, bring it down to what I'll call current grade of the lawn area around it. And to do that, they'll have to blast away the ledge even to the grade, and then a little below it, and then put in some fill and topsoil. So, they are regrading that portion of property right out of the property line. Uh, no other regrading on the property involved with the new house construction, or the driveway, uh, requires permit from P and Z. Maybe a very small piece of the circular driveway, or not really? So, so, okay, we're gonna focus just on that one area on the southern property line. Doug has submitted a drainage report and plans showing what they're gonna do to that grade by dropping it, I think, blasting away ten feet of ledge down.
We can throw it off blasting versus chipping, or is it the case?
Right. I think when I talked to Doug about it, he said, due to the amount of ledge there, blasting would be preferred. Uh, hole ramming, you, you estimated you'd be out there quite a while.
If you get hole ramming, yes.
If hole ramming, blasting would, with a permit from the fire marshal, would get this done a lot quicker.
Correct.
With less noise impacts.
Makes sense, right.
Do we have antique houses near this thing?
Not that aware of.
No, I don't think so. I mean, this house is from the forties or fifties. I don't have a pin.
Why don't you overlap, Doc? Send your name, free, to-
Sure. Uh, Doug DeVesta, fresh engineer, represents the applicant.
Thank you.
Um, the house age, the existing house, I did look it up on the assessor's map, it's, it's fairly old. It's, I would say, probably sixty, seventy years old, I might have cut back to the sixties or even the fifties. Um, so again, what's on the board right now is the existing conditions. Um, got the, uh, listing paved driveway to the red barn. Um, that's gonna be remaining, the existing house with the greenhouses in the front, and then the lead rock in the south portion of it, as you mentioned in the, your description. That, the zone, um, splits the property, probably two-thirds, one-third, to the south. To the north is the one-half acre zone, to the, to the south is the one-acre zone. So, again, we're looking to raise the existing house and construct a new house in the same general location as the existing, utilizing the same curb cut on the south, the north end, and create a, a circular driveway out to the, um, south end of the property, and then have that lay continue up to the existing barn. The existing barn will be renovated and made into a two-car garage. Um, and as what Jeremy talked about, is that the, the rate, rating and refilling process of the application is really the south portion of the property there, the lead rock. If you go to my second page there, um, we did a cross-section through, the cross-section through A, you see right there, and what we're doing, you actually can see what we're looking to do. Um, and this is a one-to-one scale, horizontally, vertically, it's the same, same scale, so you can see the size of the rock. Um, the dash line is the existing, the solid line along the bottom is proposing, and then the, then the hash line below that, is, we're gonna go below that area, so we can backfill it, put some topsoil, some fill in there, so we can grow grass in that area. So, again, that's what the grade will look like when we're done, um, to, to a scale. Uh, we're looking at, um, we did a calculation on removing of this lead rock. It's approximately, um, looking at, the number's here for you. Looking at about nine hundred cubic yards of rock removed. Um, and as you know, when you blast it, it fluffs up, so I, I took a fifty percent increase, um, in factor of fluffing it, so we've got about thirteen hundred and fifty cubic yards of rock removed. Um-
A rock, right?
Talking, we talked to the contractor about this. Uh, he feels that he can blast it out if, within about two to three weeks, and then remove it from the site within probably the same, probably another, another week or so, get it off-site there. Uh, we're looking at approximately, I know your question's going to be, how, how many truckloads? Um, I figured, being on the conservative side, maybe twelve yards per truck, depending on the size of the rock and stuff like that, um, about one hundred and thirteen truckloads. But again, it also depends on the size of the rock, how much of that. Um, and we're looking at blasting, not hole ramming. Obviously, the time, timeframe, uh, and the noise and stuff like that. Um, but there might be some hole ramming to break up the rocks into smaller pieces, so there may be some out there, but most, most of the rock will be done with, uh, by blasting.
And this, just for the record, this is pretty close to Token Creek Road. So, once you get off, onto five mile road to Token Creek Road, it's a straight shot to I ninety-five.
Right.
Or if you go on the other-
More, more, much, one thirty-six or Token Creek Road, which is state highway.
Which is just a contrast to, to blend the two applications. The other one that's on Altwood, that's Schofield Farms, that's-
In the woods.
It's rain, it's raining back, you know?
Correct. So, we're not that far to hop onto the state highway and, and out here on Route ninety-five, or go on one, one thirty-six.
Right, there was some place I know of.
Right.
The question I was alluding to earlier, relative to the antique houses, we just run into it once in a while where somebody comes out of nowhere, like, um, where is, uh, Joe Pankowski live?
Joe Pankowski lives on Salem Street.
Salem Streets, those houses, that if you blasting, somebody, somebody had an antique house in the area, you'd crack their foundation or something like that.
Well, it'll be, obviously, we talked about this, it'll be, the fire marshal will issue the permit. Um, the, a pre-blast survey will be done, uh, within five hundred feet. Um, the, the, the residents can have the option to have it done or not have it done, but we, we encourage them to have it, have the, uh, pre-blast, um, survey done. So, if any antique houses in the area within that five hundred feet, they would definitely, hopefully would have, take, take, take up onto the, um, the, the pre-blast survey, make sure.
Pardon me, how far is the Garnett's house from the edge of the ledge? It looks pretty close, but I don't know how many, how many feet is that?
I could estimate, being out there, say, probably fifty to sixty feet away. I can estimate being out there, say probably fifty to sixty feet away.
Yeah, okay, so.
I know, but there's, it'll happen.
It's close.
That's three.
I mean, it's really close.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just.
So that pre, pre blasting survey will be done and to make sure, what, I don't.
How many days of blasting do you have?
Three weeks.
Well, we're looking at two, two to, two, two to three weeks, I want to get a little, they, they're telling me two weeks, I better go two to three weeks in case there's any issues like that, so about, about, uh, three weeks of blasting.
Is there a difference in blasting in the cold to, not cold, I, I'm trying to think of.
No, no, there's not.
And then what, if we approve this, when would this approval wouldn't be until January, right?
Likely.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I mean, this, I mean, this, this is, that's a good point, because it's a good time to.
Before the holidays.
Right, it's a good time, be a good time to do the winter, winter time, okay, we're indoors and stuff like that, so we're not disturbing people when they're outside during the summer months. So it would be good if we get the approval through in Jan, in January, then you can probably start, late January, early February, February, March, it'll be done by mid-March and then start the construction right after that.
And then all the trees, I'm imagining the Garnett's trees, there's, F, right, there was, am I remembering? I mean, I'm seeing them here, but there was some, there's some definitely, um, plant things around there.
Trees over here?
Yeah, and then the ones on their property?
They planted them, they, the Garnett's planted them on my client's property and have been, have been maintaining them.
Okay, so what happens, I, I mean, it's a lot of blasting, so I'm just wondering if we'll just make sure that we, that any tree that goes down or bush or whatever gets replaced? So that post blasting, the number of trees that are there are the number of trees that are there later?
Uh, I mean, I think on our property or, or on.
On both.
And they, their property.
I mean, the Garnett's property is just so, so close.
Right, I guess the question is, and I, I haven't dealt with this, if a tree is damaged because of the blasting and the tree is on the ground.
That's what I mean.
Well, then, right, right, right.
Yeah, just to make sure, just to.
The trees, the trees on the Garnett's property.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big responsibility.
On the Garnett's property, whatever you guys wanna do is your property, right?
From, I'm gonna respond, right, yeah, I mean, there's, and then they, the blasters are insured, so if a tree does get damaged from blasting, which hopefully everything says on our property, I mean, there'd be mats. You know, they put mats over the blasting, um, holes and stuff like that, so there's way no, no explosion rock or rocks will be blown up off to the neighbors' properties and stuff like that, so.
Okay, are you, are you tactically removing block ridge from the Garnett's property? Cause there's that little piece that falls over.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're gonna rep, rep, rep the property line, I mean, we'll talk to the Garnett's, I think my client has talked to them and they're, they might be willing to have it removed off their property as well, but it's just only a small piece of it.
Right, right.
And it does, as you saw on my, on my cross section, you know, there's, there's the property line right there, so we're really, right at that point there, just.
You probably, at the end of the day, you probably not feel obligated.
No, probably not.
Now, well, that's, I'm glad you mentioned that Steve, that was my question to Doug is, is there a point where you might find that? You're saying, you know what, we got rid of most of the ledge, we're okay, we didn't get rid of as much as shown on the plans. And Doug said, that might happen, it's unlikely, it's unlikely, but it could happen.
I mean, Penny Glasser went the other way over on, on Seto's Trail, she was supposed to take out half the rock and she took out everything.
Right, there was a sightline issue on that one, right near the corner of, uh, Old Estill Road and Southwest Trail. So I think it, we wanted to talk to the commission about that, if they were to blast less and as long as the grades are generally the same, if they want to leave a piece of ledge, would that be okay with the commission to do that?
It's fine, it's fine by me, it's, you can, you might wanna leave it for architectural purposes and, and, you know, it can be a sun exposure.
As long as they can't go back and take out more at a later date, I'm fine with that.
Just disturb everyone just once.
Yeah, like, I mean, or they have to come back.
Right, okay.
I mean, this is the maximum, I mean, what we're showing is the maximum, because if we have something less, you have, you, the commission, the commission has any problem with less, the more is problem, less is not a problem.
Right, but I think what Jen's saying is if you guys finish blasting and then, you know, a month and a half later, you're like, you know something, let's go back and do it again. That's not much, right?
Well, yeah, maybe not a month and a half, but.
But if they come back, if they come back in a year, they can apply in a year.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, we've also asked for, we also asked for a waiver from, for CAM, who were within a thousand feet, and we did get a waiver from that from Jeremy and Dave, Dave T D. Uh, we've also asked for a waiver, um, of section eight eighty, uh, stormwater, uh, full stormwater, uh, management program. Uh, because we're in the lower thirds of the watershed, what we're proposing is a, um, bio-retentionary subsurface for first, for first flush water quality for the first inch of runoff from the impervious areas.
Where is the bio-retention?
So we've got, we've got one, got half, the back half of the house, the barn will go to an area, uh, in the, in the south, in west corner of the property. And the driveway's got two catch basins near the, uh, property lines, that will go into a, a detention system, bio-retention area in the, um, uh, east of the, of the driveway. So it's gonna handle the first, first inch of the first flush.
I thought you said bio-retention, to me, that's a rain garden, right?
Well, bio, sub, subsurface bio-retention.
So you're doing cultex, the same.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Uh, we did, so it's testing out there, we gravelled down to, um, eight, eight plus feet, no water, so it was very, really good material out there, very pleased with that, so it was good. Um, also, we've had comments from, um, Darren, um, dated October twenty-ninth, um, you want me to go through those comments? Uh, you certainly can go through them and address them, I have, um, I have two copies for the, for the staff, so you can, for the record to say that was addressing, was there addressing Darren's comment there.
So you gave us your standard, will you redline back his answers?
Yes, uh, done, basically, you can go through it, but a lot of them were just acknowledging certain things need permits or don't need permits. Adding a note to the plan, and, uh, there was one note nine, uh, about a ninety degree bend added to an outlet pipe. That was the one important out to me in the office.
Right, there is, they, the, the, the detail did have in the catch basins, that there are ninety degree bends or hood, so it keeps any floatables from going out, you see the detention systems. From the, the four catch basins that are proposed on the site.
Okay.
Doug, since the waiver was granted the, the eight eighty, can you just quickly review the downstream analysis, so where is that water gonna flow?
Okay, well, we're, we're collecting most of the water, um, through catch basins on the driveway, so really, any water that's not really being collected would be from the catch basin to the property line and to the road right away. Or to the edge of the pavement, and that water's gonna flow in a norly direction, down to Five Mile River Road, across the street into Five Mile, so really, so we're right, we're right there.
Okay.
Thanks for your questions, Jim.
You good?
I'm, I'm good.
Questions for the commission?
No, sir.
Larry, Jeff, no, good. Okay, um, anyone who wants to speak to this application?
I would.
I can run it up, sir, just stick your name to the record.
Um, James Howe, I live on a continuous property.
Do you have her behind us?
Yeah, next door to us. Um, and so just, um, I guess, and I'm also, um, got a question from Gigi Arnett as well, just about that, um, insurance, uh, there was a, you know, enough insurance to cover any, any damage that should take place for either of our houses during that time. We, we, uh, I know that I was there when, uh, there was some blasting for a pool that was in a property right next door. And, um, it was pretty disruptive for that whole time, and so as I listened to three weeks of blasting, I just had a follow-up question as to like, you know, is that during the weekend as well? And, um, will we be notified when it takes place and when it's over and that sort of thing?
We could regulate that, the only thing I would tell you relative to blasting versus hole ramming, it, it blasting is at least half the time period?
I understand, I'm just saying blasting is very disruptive.
Right, I don't.
You know, as.
Have we put regs like nine to five, we, we did that before, right?
I don't know what the fire marshal usually does, I, I, I think in this case, Doug, your client would be amenable to weekdays only, nine to five.
Okay, I'll be sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Eric Boyd was all over this stuff like.
Right, or eight to five or nine to five, but I think the commission here could, because of the amount, certainly said something, especially since Doug is representative, hey, my client's okay with just weekdays, working hours.
I'm kinda thinking, you know, nine to four or something like that, or, I don't think they want to start at eight o'clock in the morning.
No, definitely not, and there's lots of people.
Do you have Jada suggested talking with us now?
Uh, I know, nine to, nine to four, I'm trying to be a good neighbor, but it's, it is a huge piece of ledge.
My clients are here with me tonight and nine, and nine to four is fine with them.
Okay.
Weekdays.
We, we're, we're. And workdays, Monday, Monday through Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, sorry, Monday.
Thank you.
First time?
Yes. Um, nine to five, uh, I mean, excuse me, nine to four is good, Monday through Friday, my clients have no problem with that.
Excluding holidays.
Yep.
You're not blasting on more of these, I think.
It's, sorry, one more question, so about the blasting, um, and sorry for my ignorance, but the street side, how do you, how do you, I know there's different types of blasting, like one that goes deep and then it crumbles within itself and. So how are you, cause there's people that are on Berry, like I do run this area, so how are we gonna, what do you usually do in front? To like, make sure that there's not anything that's going out in the street?
You're gonna have your roshit controls, right?
We have roshit controls, send, you know, sil, great, send a silk fence for erosion, but we're also gonna put down mats.
Okay.
So as they have, if you see those, they like take old tires and they cut them up and they, and they bound them together, that's the kind of mats they're gonna be putting down on this. So, so when they blast it, they put the mats down on the area they're gonna blast, that actually will lessen the, the sound and also keep the rocks from, from exploding out, so that's.
And put the mats on top of the rock when you burn something.
Correct, and then they blast on that, they put the blasting caps on and then they blast it and that holds it down, and then when they're done, they remove that, they remove the mats, then they start ruining the block from there. Right, and they're probably do, I mean, they're not gonna, not, I don't foresee them going and drilling, you know, to ten feet and blasting with highs, I see them going down so many feet, blast, smaller blasts at a time. That's how, that's how I foresee, I'm not, I'm not a blaster, but I would assume that's how the blaster would do this.
So do five feet blast, take it very bit and five feet blast or whatever?
And that, and that's why it's not a disturbing, it's not a, a big of a charge and stuff.
The usual commission condition of approval would be no processing or sorting on site, it's not a gravel operation, everything's just gotta be taken right off site.
Right, we, I think we just, we waved it once.
In all my years, I think it was once, and it was a big parcel with no one around and.
And for Dave.
Dave, Jenn, Jenn, he's got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool.
Okay, uh, anyone else to be, anyone who wants to speak to this application? Seeing none, I think we're good, it's a lot of blasting.
Yeah.
Um, time frames and all that, trucks and whatnot, same thing?
Yeah, we'll have to sort that out during deliberations.
It's like a hundred trucks.
It's a lot of trucks, it's ten, uh, ten foot high mountain rock.
Great, my kid's over.
This is, okay, turn motion to close. So moved, uh, second, Larry?
I'll second.
There you go, all in favor? Thank you, sir.
Your ears closed.
Thank you.
Last but not least, landfill regearing application number four seventy-two, Mark Alexander Mars, Marski? Marzuski? Did I?
Keep trying.
Seven color road. Gets struck several, reducing to the northern west side, we exist in your right, as you saw. Uh, inside a new in-ground swimming pool and spa, construction of patios, uncovered porch, two new driveway areas and forward related site development activities. Something to look at, uh, the west side of CoCo, southwest of the corner formed by Leroy Avenue, is trying to assess the map number, uh, eighteen and not number seventy-six in the R one zone. Uh, this, like we said, it's just right off, um, a small street right off of Leroy Avenue, same guy. Okay, Jeremy, anything special?
Nope, uh, the existing property has a house and a barn, and the barn is at a much higher elevation than the house. They, they have the commission to install a pool, associated pool terrace, pool equipment, and what they wanna do is some regrading for a new driveway, better access from the barn down to the residents. And the regrading for the pool and pool terrace, which then close to one of the property lines. So those are the areas you're focusing on here, is the regrading near the property lines for the driveway. And I'll call it the west part of the site for the pool and associated pool terrace.
Okay, Doug, please move ahead.
Uh, again, Doug DeVesta representing the applicant, um, I'd like to submit this to the record, it's a revised, as we talked about.
Can you pronounce the applicant's name for us?
Uh, I cannot.
Mar, Marashewski.
Okay, what I've gotten up on the board here is the existing conditions, um, if you've been out to the site, we've already started some construction out there, that addition to the house. Um, you've got the darker brown through the hash marks on there, that, it, those are the, those are under a different, separate, um, application, uh, through, administered through the, through the staff. So those additions were on a different application, what you see in the dark lighter brown is the existing driveway, so there's already a horseshoe driveway that came up past the house. Up to the level where the existing barn is, and that's gonna all gonna be removed and this driveway configuration's gonna be changed. Um, so this is now the proposal here. You can see we've got a, a new driveway to the north of the existing survey thing, a, a courtyard in front of the existing barn. Um, then we put a little, uh, a visitor's courtyard, uh, off one of the existing, um, curb cuts on the lower driveway, uh, to have access to the front of the house itself. The proposal is to do a swimming pool, uh, to the west of the existing house, uh, regrading some of that corner there, uh, Jared mentioned, on the western property line. To get that, get the grade down closer to the elevation of the existing house for the pool, uh, provide some additional patios and terraces off the house and between the house and the, um, addition and around the pool area. Then doing some regrading, um, behind the house, north part of the house with two access, uh, walkways down to, to the house itself, just to give a little better access to the property. Um, in terms of stormwater management, uh, we are providing detention system for the new driveway portion from the garage area to a det, a cul-de-sac system, subsurface detention system to the north. Then we're providing, um, another detention system to handle the, the back portion of the house and the, the post additions, along with the, uh, patio areas that we drain to a detention system. Um, south of the house with a overflow down to a little further south of that. The house is served by, um, usable water and sewer, and those are all gonna stay the same. Um, in terms of detention system, we're providing a zero increase in runoff for, uh, all storms from two to the fifty year storms as required by section eight eighty, um, of the zoning regulations. We've had a couple of comments, um, Fred had a comment regarding, um, the original plan that was submitted to, with the application. Which I think you have, have before you right now, uh, we did not show a, any tracking pad on the, um, new parking court area, and we did add that on the plan per, uh, Fred's comments. Uh, Darren had a few comments, um, which I submitted, uh, a letter addressing those comments as well, and I also provided, uh, two copies of the plan that you see, um, on the, um, on the board here right now, showing that any tracking pad, um, on the plan itself. You know, basically Darren's comments, um, just really statements more than anything else, um, the, the two, the curb cuts, the, the two driveways are more than fifty feet apart as per town requirements. Uh, it's a public road, uh, road opening permit will be required, uh, and we do have a note on that requiring, um, a permit from D P T W, uh, for the new curb cut and any work that's done in the right of way. Um, for, up there, Ian here, uh, percolation test and de-test holes were dug, uh, for the detention system, so we met that requirement as well. And that's really, that's really it from, from Darren, and again, I have that in writing, um, that gave to Fred tonight, along with a revised plan you're seeing on the board. So if there's any questions from the commission, I'd be glad to, uh, to address them.
Did I notice, um, is it, is the existing propane tank, is that gonna, it, I think, are they putting propane in that street, I know it's going up Leroy Avenue. Is it getting.
I'm not sure, I don't think.
Kind of an exonerate.
I don't think.
Propane?
Yes.
I mean, gas.
Yes, yeah, yes.
They dug up all, all Leroy roads, so I guess.
I'm sorry, you can't speak from the, can you?
I, I don't need to comment, they're, they're right, they already made a comment that goes up the road, but.
Okay, so that's not get, that's, you're not working kind of sort of near that, that's not gonna relocate it. No, I think, I think you did nice job, yeah, um, any questions on the commission, Larry, Jim? Jim, George, anyone on this panel? Okay, um. Looks good to me, uh, motion to close? All right, no, hold on, wait, hold on. Anyone who wants to speak to this application? Seeing none, uh, turn motion to close?
Motion to close.
Jim, second from Jim, all in favor? Here it's closed, thanks again, Doug.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays.
That is the.
How do you pronounce your name?
Marashewski.
Marashewski.
Yes.
I vote that we don't deliver anything to him.
I say what I mean, especially.
I feel like you wanted us to.
Approve of minutes? Do you guys have any comments on the minutes?
I was, I searched totally for a typo to prove that I actually write, but I can't find one.
That's killing it, Billy.
It's always killing you.
Okay, it's, look for a motion to approve the minutes was, I think, said by George?
I did.
But I watched the video.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Jen, all in favor? Most minutes are approved, all in favor, it's aye, unanimous. That's it, any other business?
No.
Nope, no deliberations. I'll turn motion to a jury.
Motion to a jury.
Jennifer. All right, Jen, all in favor?